Move right along into item number 10, CAA 20-127. At 601 North 27th Street. This is an appeal of the planning director's approval of a wireless communication facility co-locating on a streetlight pole in an R2 zone. And we're going to hear from Carla Nelson, from staff.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, before you. It doesn't look like my screen is shared yet. Just a second.
Oh yeah, I believe David was sharing previously.
Okay, here we go. Before you, as an appeal of the planning director's approval of a wireless communication facility co-locating us on a streetlight pole on the northwest corner of 27th and Pleasanton Avenue in an R2 medium-density residential zone. The photo here shows the streetlight which the antennas and related equipment for the 5G installation is proposed to co-locate on. The wireless communication facility was appealed based on the six grounds listed on this slide. First, I will discuss ground number one and ground number three that are highlighted. The remaining issues are outside of Boise City Code. Boise City Code does include a list of submittal documents which are required with wireless communication facilities. Traditionally, the planning team has applied this full list of required documentation only to new towers, which require conditional use permit approval, and not to administratively approved applications. However, the appellant is correct that Boise City Code does not make a distinction between administratively allowed wireless communication facilities and those that require conditional use permit in regard to the required documentation. Specifically, in this case, the applicant did not provide a propagation study or written analysis with the initial application. These documents have since been provided, and based on an open record for administrative appeals, the planning team finds the requirement to now be satisfied. The propagation study shown on this slide demonstrates with radio frequency modeling that 5G technology is not currently available in the area, and after the installation, it will be available. And the provided written analysis touches on all of the required details, including a description of the surrounding area and impediments which limit sighting options. The remaining grounds for appeal focus on federal laws and regulations specifically related to rules governed by the Federal Communications Commission and the National Environmental Policy Act. It's important to understand that the planning team reviews microcell wireless communication facilities based on a very limited and narrow review criteria, which is shown on this slide. And while Boise City Code is developed to comply with federal laws and regulations, the city does not enforce those regulations. With rapidly changing technology, there may be a reason or cause to update Boise City Code, but until that time, the city must review these installations based solely on the criteria in City Code, and any concerns related to federal regulations should be addressed with the appropriate federal agency. It is also worth noting that the Federal Communications Commission is responsible for setting health standards for radio frequency emissions, and as long as the proposed facilities comply with the FCC's radio frequency standards, federal law goes as far as to prohibit state and local governments from regulating them based on environmental effects of those radio frequency emissions. In conclusion, with the propagation maps and the written analysis provided, the planning team finds that no error in the director's decision was made and recommends that the commission deny the appeal and uphold the decision to approve the wireless communication facility. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carla. We'll go ahead and hear from the applicant now. They have the applicant as Jason Evans and Melissa Reagan. Jason, your hand is up. You could please go ahead and start with your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioner members. Jason Evans, your address is 3377 North Eagle Road, Suite 110131. I'm here on behalf of J5 Infrastructure Partners representing Verizon. We have reviewed the planner's recommendation and agree and are available to answer any questions that might come up regarding the facility.
Very good. Next, we'll hear from a representative of the West End Neighborhood Association. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. The appellant is Kathy Cook. Is Kathy listed? Kathy? Yes, I see your name there. Kathy is the appellant. Could you please state your name and address for the record and any comments?
Yes, can you hear me?
Again.
Yes, my name is Kathy Cook. I live at 688 North 29th Street, Boise, Idaho. I did have a PowerPoint ready. Am I able to share my screen or would that cannot be put up?
Yeah, just one minute. I do a little tech switcheroo here.
Trust that you can see my slides here. Okay, okay. So, brief introduction, I stated my name. I live two blocks from the proposed 4G, 5G antenna. I am an electromagnetic radiation specialist, and I utilize high-end professional equipment to measure radio frequencies and their properties, and I was chosen to be the spokesperson by the several dozen neighborhood residents that oppose this facility. So you already have the background information, and here's a photo of the site. So the reasons why we feel that this approval should be revoked.
Your slides change.
I'm sorry, what was that?
We're not seeing your slides change.
That is interesting. So, okay.
We still see a PowerPoint screen with slides on the left-hand side. I'm not sure if you're in projection slideshow mode.
I'm in full screen mode here. Is that any better?
Yep, now we can see your slides changing.
Okay, I'll just.
I'd recommend just clicking through them.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just leave it like this. Thanks. So, yeah, so as Carla mentioned, we believe that the first point to this issue is that there is a direct violation of Boise City Code. Here's a screenshot of the code. So at the time the application was approved, no propagation study had been submitted. In fact, this is the case for the several hundred wireless communication facility applications to date. Though a so-called propagation study has since been provided, it was done so nearly six weeks after the application's approval. So I understand that the city is allowed to receive additional information after an application is approved, but surely that doesn't mean that you can approve an application in the hopes that the required documentation is provided in the future. In other words, the city can't preemptively approve an application prior to receiving all of the required documentation. So we feel this is a clear failure of the administrative process, and this fact alone should really kind of end the discussion here because the director did in fact allow this approval in error. Additionally, I want to briefly to address the so-called propagation study, as you saw these pictures listed already. So what you see here, it does not qualify as a propagation study. The city has admitted that they are not radio frequency experts, in which case the city should be consulting with experts to ensure that they are knowledgeable about these applications and their materials. I am an expert in radio frequencies, and I assure you what is presented here is not a propagation study. There's absolutely nothing of substance on this submitted document. There's no explanation of what the document means, how to read it, what methods were used, what frequencies were measured, what equipment was used, the date, the time. These documents pretty much demonstrate no relevant information. But more importantly, a propagation study is meant to establish whether or not an area has adequate cellphone coverage, not data transmission. It is apparent that the applicant, as well as the city staff, don't have an understanding of what a propagation study even means. Now, your staff has stated that fifth-generation 5G data networks are intended to deliver faster speed and sustain a highly concentrated number of devices in a small area, and as a result, the 5G capacity coverage gap cannot be measured by the ability to make and receive calls. However, wireless capacity for data is immaterial, as per federal law determination for a new WCF can only be made on the need for telecommunications coverage and the need to fill a proven significant gap in telecommunications coverage, not information services data capacity. And this is outlined in your packet of information that I have already submitted. So this viewpoint is also immaterial because the growing need for data and internet services is best met via cable and fiber optics, which are up to 10 times faster than any wireless technology, including 5G. Cellphone antennas are not meant to provide at-home or in-office internet services. That is why almost all Boise homes have internet through cable or fiber, so this is a mute point. It is the city's responsibility to understand the materials they were reviewing, and if they do not understand, it is their responsibility to hire or consult with experts. Otherwise, they will continue to be fooled by the applicants and put the city and its taxpayers at risk. So to show that there is perfectly adequate coverage in the area, myself and a few neighbors conducted our own study where we made phone calls with a Verizon-enabled phone. You can view the video at this link here, which is in your packet, and these are just pictures of me making these phone calls. I made numerous phone calls without any problem. I had completely adequate coverage in the area. So the second point I wanted to mention was the NEPA review, and as city staff admitted that there was no NEPA review in the documents, as is required by FCC. And so this is again the case for all of the 150-plus applications for WCFs. There is no NEPA documentation. So your city staff has stated that the enforcement of federal regulation is not the federal, not local, level, and that the city is not permitted to enforce NEPA regulations. But what they didn't mention is that a community member has sent a letter to the Boise staff and FCC on July 1st of 2020 outlining this deficiency, and because there's an open case on this application, the city has a duty to follow the federal law. It cannot knowingly break federal law, so it cannot proceed without a determination from the FCC regarding the NEPA complaint. Furthermore, the city has a responsibility to ensure that all WCFs fall within federal guidelines. In the application submitted for this proposed antenna, the specifics needed to determine the effective radiated power of the antennas are not given. The public has been assured that all WCFs are within compliance of federal guidelines, but how can this be the case if the basic information needed to determine compliance has not even been provided? This application should have never been approved without all the necessary information, and thus was approved in error. And number three, your staff has addressed this one. And again, you know, the staff admitted that they broke their own municipal code again in approving this tower without the required documentation. The residents of Boise place their trust in the city's staff that they are doing their jobs and maintaining a safe environment to live, and that they are thorough in their review of such applications that directly impact all of its residents. This, you know, certainly doesn't appear to be the case, and this is another reason why the tower application should be denied. Number four, sorry about this picture here. The proposed antenna is a direct threat to the livelihood of the homeowner at 601 North 27th Street, as they are a federal employee, and they require a secure internet and phone connection via satellite. With the proximity of this 5G, the proposed antenna's interference could happen with his internet connection, which would pose a national security threat. So your staff has stated that these considerations are not taken into account, and that the planning and zoning director is not an expert in radio frequency transmissions. This does not give the city permission to ignore such serious considerations. Rather, the city has a duty to get the expertise to address this national security issue. If you'd like to learn more about such, you know, issues of this, you can see this link here. Again, I expect the city to do a thorough job in understanding exactly what their approval means and how it may impact its residents. Okay, so moving on, number five, there is a child, a deaf child, within close proximity to this antenna and placement of the WCF. In such close proximity could interfere with the hearing aids. This really constitutes a violation of the Americans with Disabilities Act and Fair Housing Act. And once again, the city has the duty to get the expertise to address this issue, and they should engage their ADA coordinator. Lastly, number six, no indication of purpose, internet or informational services, or phone and text under the Telecommunication Services Title I or Title II has been listed in the application. So the city doesn't even know the purpose for the application and whether such purposes were the under relevant federal laws and precedents. Finally, you know, in conclusion, I just want to mention your staff has admitted numerous times that certain submitted documents were initially missing at the time of the approval. We believe this is a fatal error in the approval of this and the other 150 additional WCF applications. The fact that your code specifies an open record on appeals of administrative decisions allowing the commission to accept any evidence, regardless of whether it was presented previously, means documents in the record to be used at the time the approval decision was made. So they received the required documents two months after the application was approved, but you know, we can't reverse time and pretend the city had these documents when they made their decision. So this application, nearly all additional 150 applications throughout the city, have been approved in error, and we recommend that the planning team be relieved of their duties and this entire process be recast as a discretionary, not administrative process as specified in the City of Boise Municipal Code. So thank you very much for your time and attention to this matter, and I'm grateful for your attention. Thank you.
Great. All right, thank you very much. Okay, so now we'll go ahead and see if we have a representative from the West End Neighborhood Have a hand up for Lauren Panisi. Lauren, do you represent the West End Neighborhood Association?
I'm on the West End Neighborhood Association Board, and I am very interested in this issue. I don't have a position from the board. They did not take a position.
So you'll be, if you just sit tight then, it sounds like you probably just want to speak from a personal.
Exactly.
Rather than as representative of the neighborhood association. So we'll do that here in just one minute.
Okay.
Okay, great. I see no other hands up, so I'm going to assume we don't have a representative, an official representative of the West End Neighborhood Association here tonight. So with that, we'll go ahead and take questions from the commission to either the applicant, the appellant, or staff. Commissioner Gillespie.
I'd like to ask the initial applicant to respond to Ms. Cook's criticism of their I can't remember the guy.
Jason Evans or Melissa Reagan?
Hi, Jason Evans here, Commissioner. Melissa, would you like to speak with that part, or would you like for me to? I don't know if she has been.
Yeah, I think, can you all hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Good evening, Melissa Reagan. I'm actually outside counsel for Verizon Wireless, the Sherman and Howard, 633 17th Street, Denver, Colorado. With respect to the question regarding the propagation maps, actually, in the recent September 2018 FCC order, which was just recently affirmed by the Ninth Circuit, the FCC no longer applies the significant gap in service coverage to determine whether there is an effective prohibition of personal wireless service under the Telecommunications Act. It doesn't limit that standard to only protecting against coverage gaps such as the personal phone calls that was described by the appellant, and it further found that coverage gap-based approaches are simply incompatible with the world where the vast majority of new wireless builds are going to be designed to add network capacity and take advantage of new technologies rather than plug gaps in the network coverage. And so the analysis of whether or not you could take a phone call is no longer what the FCC looks at specifically under the Telecommunications Act. So Commissioner Gillespie, I think that addresses it from the legal perspective. I'm not sure if you had a specific question as far as the more technical issue.
Mr. Chairman, so I guess this is both a question to you and the city. So the city has a requirement that a propagation map be submitted, and I think Ms. Cook, the appellant, is suggesting that the submitted propagation map is inadequate, although the city has accepted it. So I guess I'd like to hear from folks about, you know, should we accept this propagation map, or is it really within the city's discretion to decide, to interpret the nitty-gritty of what must be in that map?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gillespie, so the propagation map that was provided was shared with our legal counsel, and we found it to be sufficient for what we're trying to achieve with that requirement of documentation.
Good there. Commissioner Gillespie, we'll hear from Ms. Reagan.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I, so I guess I have, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
I guess I have a question for the city's legal counsel. So the argument was made by the appellant, Ms. Cook, that the submittal of essentially two pieces of information required by the code after the director's approval, that somehow the commission tonight can't consider that. In other words, we can't cure it in this hearing, and yet I thought that in an appeal hearing, we in a sense could start from scratch and could hear all information before us as if it was a new, you know, a new hearing. Is my interpretation of that correct?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Gillespie, you are correct. It specifically states in our code that on appeals from administrative decisions, we do have an open record on that appeal, and that for the decision that is before the mission, you may consider any evidence regardless of whether it was presented previously or not. So in very short, you're starting from scratch.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bratner.
I have a question for Ms. Cook, and it's regarding the national security concern that you listed. Are you able to tell us which agency this person is working for? Ms. Cook?
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute here.
You were unmuted.
I am the, no, the homeowner is, does not want to be publicly involved.
Okay, but then it seems to me that, I'm puzzled that national security kinds of business are transacted out of a person's home. I've had significant interactions with members of the intelligence community, and the word "SKIF" comes up all the time. And so I'm just interested, since it is one of the arguments advanced, does it hold up if that's work that should not be done in that venue in the first place?
Sure, I understand what you're saying. That's not, my area of expertise is on the electromagnetic radiation side. You know, this neighbor gave me this information, and I assumed that he's, you know, I don't have the expertise to know what that means. He just informed me he's very concerned because of his work.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff, the applicant, or the appellant?
So I do have a question for, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Bratner.
A question for counsel. One of the things, and this was something in going through some of my study of this case, came to mind. There are a set of things that Boise City needs to ensure are done, and it sounds like based on the, some of the after-the-fact submissions, that those boxes have been checked. And then there are those that are required by federal law. What is the city's obligation in terms of enforcement of federal law versus, I don't know, directing appellants to go through the court system to handle those?
Our jurisdiction has been outlined very, very narrowly by the FCC. I believe it was Ms. Reagan that referenced a 2008 decision by the FCC. That decision essentially allows the cities to regulate the height and aesthetics and some various zoning requirements of these small wireless facilities. We are not permitted or authorized to enforce on a basis or to discriminate where these sites are located on the basis of environmental or health effects or possibilities thereof. Those are all kept within the jurisdiction of those various federal agencies. I certainly could provide the specific Code of Federal Regulations that provide those preemption. Those regulations also provide that those cellphone companies, or whomever it is that is rolling out these 5G sites, are required to adhere to radio frequency requirements, environmental requirements, and those types of things. There are specified uses that are allowed. There are some uses that require additional federal review. However, in short, those are all outside of the city's jurisdiction, and what we have been permitted and authorized to do are what is contained within our code. And as Ms. Nelson put forward in the staff report, this site application has met the criteria of what is within Boise City Code.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Jim.
So just to make sure that I have that all boiled down into a size that my brain can hold, it appears to me what you're saying is that the other, the two items that were called out were fine. Those are good, whether the propagation study is sufficient or not, I'm not going to handle that right now. But the other items cited need to be, if you will, appealed through the federal system, not the Boise Planning and Zoning System. Is that a fair statement, or have I assumed too much?
That would be a fair statement, Commissioner. There is, Ms. Cook did mention that there is an outstanding issue right now before the FCC. There is nothing that would require the city to stay its decision-making authority while that is pending, and it's also my understanding it may not be with regard to this particular site, and don't believe that it would be within this commission's purview for consideration.
Thank you so much.
All right, final call for questions. All right, very good. Okay, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing portion of this item. We had a few folks sign up ahead of time. I'm going to just run down the names that I have, and if you're online, you can go ahead and raise your hands. David DeHaas, Paul G., Vivian Lowkary, Carla Kyle, and Anne Heike, sorry, Anne Heike or Hook. I apologize if I've slaughtered your last names. So we're going to go ahead and open that up in that order. So David, let's see, David, I saw David earlier. David, if you can go ahead and start with your name and address for the record, please. Looks like you're muted at the moment.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you. My name is David DeHaas, 1116 South Vista, Boise, Idaho. I attest and affirm that the following statements are true. I attest and affirm that the following statements are true, accurate with my personal knowledge. This body's commission is to keep our streets and properties safe for the private enjoyment of its citizens. Allowing wireless communication facilities goes against providing a safe environment for our public. Further, the small wireless communication facilities goes against the city's vision for a green and sustainable community. These, these facilities cause homes to lose up to 25% in value. These wireless communication facilities are not providing any service that we don't already have access to. 5G towers are mostly to be used for the download of broadband data, so you can download a movie in two seconds or do gaming. All the homes in Boise have access to safe, reliable broadband via co-opted cable for those purposes. 5G towers to work must be located every 500 feet. A typical macro tower that we are all used to, located 2,500 feet away from humans, 200 feet in the air, has enough for five bars on a cell phone when it reaches your home. The amount of power at the home is .002 radiation units. Conversely, when you put a small cell 50 feet from a home, you have 50,000 radiation units. This is an effective radiated power 25 million times greater than what is needed for a phone call. This power is an invisible pollutant, creating a health hazard with dire effects on human biology. This application must be denied. The city code states a propagation study must be performed. The application did not provide one at the time. Such study be moral and ethical should be done by an independent third party. None of the applicants have provided a propagation study. Why has the staff allowed nearly 300 applications to come into this department without asking for the propagation study? And staff shows a study that shows there's no gap in coverage. The appellant has used their meters and measured the site and shows no gap in coverage. So where there is no gap in coverage, there is no need and should be denied. Quoting the planning director, "The planning director is not an expert on radio frequency emissions." I agree. The planning director in the department needs to pause all applications until they know what they are doing. The director incorrectly states, "State and local governments are preempted from regulating radio frequency emissions by the Federal Telecommunications Act." The planning director is incorrect. The director has looked at the wrong title regarding jurisdiction over the small wireless communication facilities. His quote is from Title II of the FCC. "The FCC regulates phone and voice and text only. This has been clearly documented in court case. The regulation for 5G broadband is in Title I, which the director has not obviously read. The FCC has made it clear that cities, counties can regulate wireless communication facilities, and regulate they should. This is about public safety. There also needs to be a NEPA review. None has been provided." Now let's look at the applicant. Who is J-5? Does J-5 have adequate insurance coverage to cover the city from liability of lawsuits that will fall upon the city when these towers cause health damage? The answer is no, because there's not one company in the world that provides such coverage against the health damages from electromagnetic frequencies. Verizon actually states this in their disclosure of risks to their investors, not one. That's why Verizon's name is not on these applications. They're using shell companies to avoid liability. Liabilities from health damage will fall upon the city and taxpayers. I have expressed no matter mere concern, but solely matters of substance.
David, you're at time. Thank you. Yep. Paul G., or G.?
Let me tell you, let me tell you a few things that I do know. Okay, Paul G., and I, I am on 27th Street in Boise. Okay, let me tell you what I've learned so far, that as far as what you need to do tonight, is you have to base it on the evidence that's in the record. You had two presentations. You had one by Kathy Cook. You had a second by Jason from the other side. He declined to give a presentation. So now all you're doing is basing on whatever information they've provided to you versus what Kathy Cook has provided to you. Okay? I'm also an expert in measuring and mitigating microwave radiation. I do understand what a propagation study is, and the only people who have commented on whether or not this propagation study is okay are attorneys. They know nothing about propagation studies. They have no expertise in the matter. They have no say. You have two experts on the phone telling you right now that a propagation study is one in which they are required to come out and actually measure microwave radiation of the existing situation, and then project what might happen after they install. That has not happened. This is not a propagation study. This is pure fiction. Now, the other thing you have to understand is that in 2018, that order, 18-133 by the FCC, was admitted by the FCC of being a presumptive order. It's a statement of FCC preferences. No, none of that has wiped out case law in the Ninth Circuit where you are. And so all of that significant gap in coverage and least intrusive means stands despite the FCC's preference. What can happen is it can be shaped in the courts. It is only a presumptive order. And we also have other things that that order has said. In fact, it wasn't fully reaffirmed by the Ninth Circuit. In fact, they said the order portions of it were arbitrary and capricious. We therefore grant the petitions, vacate those portions, and remand them to the FCC. What did they say? "We hold the FCC's requirement that all local aesthetic regulations be objective is not adequately explained is therefore arbitrary and capricious. We also hold that the FCC's requirement in the order that aesthetic regulations be no more burdensome than regulations applied to other infrastructure deployment is contrary to court-controlling statutory provision." So you have to understand that what you're doing here is essentially against federal law tonight, and you have to be very careful to not believe the lie that was actually perpetrated by the Verizon counsel and attorney, trying to mislead you about what this order actually says. And so what you really have to do is you have to understand, your staff approved it without a propagation study and without any descriptions, and even today, when you go and say, hey, what antennas are they using? You look at the report, it says model TBD in the canister. Don't even tell you what antenna it is. Doesn't tell you how much power. Then you try to look up the specs on the macro antenna for 5G, and you can't find that online either. You guys are way off the reservation here. If you vote this through tonight, you will be breaking the law.
Okay, thank you, Paul. That's your three minutes. The next person who had signed up was Vivian Locari, Locari. Vivian, if you could start with your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you, Vivian Locari, 2211 North 19th Street, Boise resident of 27 years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I attest and affirm the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. I speak from my background as a public health scientist and a medical professional. First, the independent propagation study submitted by Kathy Cook, Certified Electromagnetic Radiation Specialist, provides countervailing evidence to documentation from the applicant as to why the wireless communications facility, or WCF, is needed at this, at this chosen location. Second, current city approvals for WCFs, also known as small cells, constructed in the public right-of-way as close to 30 inches, as described in city code, to homes do not even provide even the most basic public safety. And you heard that explained by David DeHaas, the difference between .002 radiation units from a macro tower properly positioned, once that, that signal gets into a bedroom, allowing for five bars on a cell phone. You know, that's different than the, the small cell positioned 50 feet from the outside of someone's home, penetrating a bedroom and a body therein, providing 50,000 radiation units. Okay? That constitutes a violation of public safety, and you are responsible for public safety as city officials. Neither the FCC nor the wireless industry own this. This is yours. Okay, children's vulnerability to such radiation is admitted by the EPA and the Institute of Electrical and Electronics Engineers, IAEA, that's a mouthful for me, based on their body's greater absorption thereof of the radiation and the susceptibility of their developing nervous systems. We have helped other, other cities in Ada County and around the state of Idaho understand their duties to public safety, privacy, property values, and the quiet enjoyment of the streets, all threatened by the hazardous pollution of WCFs in the public rights-of-way. Wireless broadband by copper coaxial cable or fiber optic is far superior to wireless in all areas, data capacity, download and upload speed, personal and national cybersecurity from electromagnetic pulse and natural attack, public safety from health and environmental effects, and energy efficiency. It's crucial that you act per your oath of office to safeguard the health and safety and general welfare of all our residents, especially our children. I've expressed no matter of mere concern, but solely matters of substance fact and law. Thank you for your consideration and your service to our community.
Thank you. All right, next I have Carla Kyle. Carla, just your name and address for the record, please, as you start, and you have three minutes.
Name is Carla Kyle, 3508 West Cootney Street in Boise. So I've been a resident in the city of Boise for over 30 years. Under this permit, the placement of a small wireless communication facility will go into a residential neighborhood. The city of Boise staff has approved this application without knowing the most basic of specifications of the applied-for permit. The Boise City Code has lumped these permits under WCFs or wire communication facilities. The planning and zoning director states that they are not an expert in these matters. So what are these WCFs for? Here's a reason I found. From the Idaho Stateman article December 4, 2019 quoted Verizon, "When it's available, typical download speeds are 450 to 700 megabits per second, with bursts faster than 1 gigabyte per second, meaning a Netflix episode or even a full movie can be downloaded in less than 10 seconds," according to Verizon. In comparison, download 4G speeds in the Treasure Valley can be less than 100 micro megabits per second. In Boise, readily available cable and fiber optic lines provide this broadband service with a download speed of up to 1,000 megabits per second. So obviously, the Stateman has also been misled. In, when Wi-Fi broadband by Verizon is brought into people's homes, it will come directly through the walls or windows of a home, is how this application works. The affected radiated power was spread from a 4G/5G tower in a 360-degree pattern. When my neighbor decides to use broadband with Verizon Wi-Fi, I have no choice when I go outside of my front lawn other than to be exposed to this affected radiated power. That's how it works. I have no choice when someone drives down my street and connects with these small towers, and I'm continuously exposed to affected radiated power. With this continuous blasting of power aiming straightaway into our homes and the natural environment of our neighborhoods, there is reason for doubt. Boise as a test city has not assumed its rights over local control of broadband, big data, Title I, infrastructure. When the city of Boise claims there is nothing we can do, this is simply not true. The state, every state owns the ability for regulatory authority of small wireless transmission facilities and the affected radiated power being emitted from them under the FCC Title I, big data broadband, for big data and streaming. It is only FCC Title II, phone and text, that is regulated by the FCC. The many macro towers have provided this service by multiple telecom companies in Boise. No need has been established for lack of phone and text coverage in this permit. There is no justification for this massive wireless broadband densification, as you continue to let these 350-plus permits, already 350 alone in Boise alone, more coming, to be approved. These wireless antennas are not necessary for coverage or public safety. It will not improve emergency responsiveness or magically close the digital divide. This broadband is not a public service or vital utility. It is gaming, television, and movies. You have been grossly misled to believe otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then I have Anne Heike. I'm sorry, I got your last name incorrect.
It's Heike, like take a hike.
Take a hike. Name and address in three minutes.
My name is Dr. Anne Heike. I live at 10900 West Wasdell in Boise. I've been a resident in Boise for over 25 years. I attest and affirm that the following statements are true, accurate, and within my personal knowledge. We are facing a public health disaster if we allow the 5G towers in. I have found this a particular, particular area of interest, and, and, let's start off with the Americans with disabilities. This child that has a hearing aid, if the 5G tower goes in, is going to be having skips and static, which could be life-threatening if a warning is called to the child that the child can't understand. Other assistive devices such as motorized wheelchairs have had interference from wireless telecommunication facilities and been prompted to go forward into traffic without, without their command. The health problems of 4G, 5G include neurodegenerative diseases, that is autism, ADD, Alzheimer's, dementia, an increase in all of these, depression, insomnia, anxiety. The number of people that I've seen with anxiety and insomnia in my 40 years of practice has, has skyrocketed from probably 10% when I started to 90% now, and I believe that it's coming from this. We also have cardiac arrhythmias, sudden death, sudden death from heart stoppage, even in children. There's increased infertility and increased cancer. The telecommunications companies will say there's no evidence of any harm from pulse-modulated microwave radiation. This isn't true. There's over 25,000 studies showing harm. If, the only testimony that I sent in was a group of studies, 100 studies that I'm currently looking at. I wanted to make it easy for you, so you can just click on it and look at these studies yourself. There's 100 of them. How many studies did it take to get asbestos and lead removed from our environment? 10,000, and yet here we are at 25,000. I could go on about the studies, I only have three minutes. Idahoans for Safe Technology has experts in the field. We want to work with you. We want to help create a code that can work for the city. The wireless telecommunication facility should not be activated till we can ensure the health and safety of all citizens in this neighborhood and in Boise. I have expressed no matter of mere concern, but solely matters of substance fact and law. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. That's all the folks that we had signed up ahead of time. I have a couple of hands raised. Barbara Parsley. Barbara, if you can start with your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Barbara Parsley. I live in Wilder, Idaho, and I was asked to speak because I, I work in entomology, and this is very, very applicable to this. I've worked as an entomologist for many years, previously at the Denver Museum of Matron Science, and presently for five years of local orchard. I've done research on insects and attended many conferences. So I'd like to discuss quickly the research that shows there are negative effects of microwaves on insects, trees, people, which has been submitted on a paper, and I have the research sightings that I submitted earlier. The 4G, 5G buildout adds multiple frequencies, all of them within microwave lengths, to the atmosphere to be absorbed by living things. Putting in these towers will be a disaster for farms and our entire food chain. Insects, particularly pollinators, are essential to our lives. There have been multiple scientific studies to show how microwave frequencies harm insects. Let me specifically mention honeybees. The microwave frequencies adversely affect honeybee behavior and physiology and drives colony collapse. We already have problems with honeybees. We don't need more. It reduces the motor activity of honeybees in the comb. Bees become aggressive. It decreases the colony strength and negatively affects egg laying. It causes difficulty for the bees to return to their hives and the loss of worker bees. It creates problems with swarming. In general, there's a significant decline in colony strength. We're already dealing, as I say, with a decrease in the honeybee population, adding microwave frequencies to their environment will only serve to speed along the potential destruction. Other insects aren't affected as well. A Colorado research study has also shown adverse effects on aspen trees and pine trees. You're in the city of trees. Well, we could eliminate that really quickly with this. Additionally, since microwave radiation is desiccating, it makes leaves more flammable. What we don't need right now are more forest fires, and that will make them prone to more forest fires. They see the radiation affecting the trees that are hit by the, that are taller and hit by the radiation, even with the cell towers we have now. The trees that are shorter and not hit are not affected. They know that it comes from telecommunications thing. So the Telecommunications Act of 1996 states that state and local government entities may make use- may make use of the public right-of-way subject to regulatory objectives, such as those relating to public safety and welfare. The above issues, which would disrupt our food chain, plants, and our trees certainly affect public welfare. So I would highly suggest that you do not approve this. All citations are written up, and I've been...
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, I see no other hands raised currently. Okay, I have three hands up. We'll go top-down. Lauren Panisi. Lauren, you can start with your name and address, please. You'll have three minutes.
Sure. Lauren Panisi. I live at 2411 West Pleasanton Avenue, Boise. I've lived here for 30 years. I'm a couple blocks away from the proposed cell tower. And it really... I'm just speaking off the cuff. This is a topic I don't really know a lot about the science, but I do understand or can appreciate the comments from the experts about the proposed or potential health hazards. I'm very concerned, of course, about my health as well as my neighbors. And I think there's a lot of information that really needs to be verified, explored, and considered before installing one of these cell towers in the middle of a residential area. So I would urge the council or the commission to pause before approving this and consider some of the other studies and the research that's been presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay, next up, we have Hank Allen. Hank, if you can start with your name and address, please. You'll have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
We can, yes.
All right, perfect. Hank Allen, 687 West Rush Court. And when I was listening to the attorney from Verizon speak, I would really like her to follow up on Title I versus Title II and broadband versus basic telecommunications services. The way that I understand it is that we're talking about right now 5G is... Hold on, I want to talk. Just give me a second. Sorry, I thought my wife came in the room. I have kids sleeping. Is that the broadband, 5G, is unregulated by the FCC right now, as per the Mozilla lawsuit. The part that's regulated is Title II, which is basic telecommunications services. And I know most of you at the city believe that you can't do anything when it refers to Title II. When it comes to Title I broadband, you were the only people that can regulate broadband communications and the power limits. So I'd really love for that attorney to follow up and just hear her points on that so that you guys realize that the broadband portion, that's what we're talking about when it comes to 5G, is the big stuff, which we already have when it comes to our Comcast communications. It is in the ground, it's wired, it's safe for us. And we don't need the wireless. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, I see no more hands raised currently. And everyone here in person has testified already. So we're going to go ahead and close the public testimony component here of this item.
Mr. Chair, rebuttal.
Yeah, right. We'll move on to rebuttal from the applicant. So applicant Jason Evans or Melissa Reagan. You'll have typically have, what, five minutes for rebuttal?
Yes, this is Melissa Reagan. Can you all hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, thank you. I won't spend too much time. I just would again reiterate that we agree with Ms. Nelson's presentation and recommendation to the Planning Commission. And also, I think that the city attorney provided some nice guidance to the Planning Commission, and we agree with all of her comments and analysis with respect to the jurisdiction that the city has versus the jurisdiction that falls within the federal government and FCC. And we believe that we've submitted all of the information and as articulated by the city attorney, the Planning Commission can receive that information now and consider it. With respect to the comments about the regulations and what the FCC order speaks to, in fact, the entire purpose really of the 2018 September FCC order was to provide regulations and guidance with respect to small wireless facilities and the deployment of 5G. And in fact, that was just recently upheld almost in its entirety by the Ninth Circuit within the past month. And specifically, the portion that was upheld was, in fact, the analysis that the FCC no longer is to, and jurisdictions are no longer, to look to the significant gap in coverage and least intrusive analysis. It, in fact, is supposed to apply whether or not the FCC or whether or not jurisdictions are effectively prohibiting deployment of wireless facilities. And it's a materially inhibit standards. It said specifically within the FCC order and the Ninth Circuit opinion that the standard of the coverage gap analysis is no longer applicable, given that we are now moving towards new advancements in technologies, specifically the small wireless facilities and deployment of 5G. And so with that, we would ask that the Planning Commission deny the appeal that has been filed and allow the applicant to proceed with its permit and the construction of the facility.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Reagan. Okay, with that, I believe we have...
Appellant.
Appellant, sorry, thank you. The appellant is able to rebut the rebuttal, I guess. And I believe Kathy, if you would like to yield your time to Paul.
Yes, I would like to yield the paw.
Okay, very good. So Paul, I see your hand is up. Paul, you'll have five minutes.
Okay, so your decision tonight is very easy because you have a lot of information in your record and very little of it is actually substantive enough from the applicant for you to actually grant this, to not uphold our appeal. You have to uphold our appeal because we have stated a much stronger case. We have brought forward to you all of the information why their propagation study has no expertise at all behind it and is based on no data whatsoever. There was not a single measurement. There was not any decision whatsoever about how much extra radiation are we putting out versus what's already there. There's been no expert to tell you that, other than our side. And you've had two experts. That's fatal. You cannot just say, oh, we won't worry about that. That's fatal. Here's what else is fatal. You approved this. Your city staff approved this without the required information. There was no write-up. And still, to this day, to this day, the application remains incomplete because there are no antenna models or specifications. So no one has a chance to understand how to accurately calculate effective radiated power. The application remains incomplete for that reason. Here's another reason. This has been reported to the FCC. There's a complaint against that. Let me show you exactly why that's important here. I'm going to now show you a webpage. Hopefully, you will see here on screen something to do with a NEPA. I just have to get out of this. You see three people here, hopefully on your screen, Aaron Goldschmidt, Eric Rosenberg, and Paul Dari. We spoke to these people in depth on December 12th and again on February 28th. And they told us exactly how the FCC is handling NEPA now that they lost their decision and lost their definition of a small wireless facility back on August of 2019 because that order was mostly vacated. And so what did she say specifically to the public? She said, hey, if this tower, which this one has, which is an antenna that's less than 10 meters from the ground, well, then for sure, it needs an environmental assessment. It cannot be built until the applicant has provided the environmental assessment. And it is true. This is not a matter between the city and the applicant. This is a matter between the public and the applicant, and the public acted, and they reported this to the FCC. Now, you cannot break federal law and continue with this application or any other application that's been reported to the FCC by just ignoring it. That would be breaking federal law. If you have any problems with this, feel free to call Ms. Rosenberg. She can explain the whole system to you very clearly. Let's go to the number-one telecom attorney in the country, Andrew Campanelli. All right? He's telling you exactly how it goes. He's runs almost 7,000 cases across the United States. He sees most of these applications, like this one, has fraudulent information in it. We've already proven to you why it's fraudulent. It's not based on any data. This is a quote directly from this 50-minute video that I suggest that you watch after you support this appeal and do not allow this to go through. He's telling you that the first thing a town should do to a worse applicant is, do you have a gap in telecommunications service? He knows that because he knows this FCC order is only presumptive. It's only a statement of preferences. The attorney's still trying to tell you that you can wipe out case law in the Ninth Circuit. It's just not true. They don't have the authority to do that. Hey, she's trying her best to sell you a piece of information that's not correct. Don't buy it. All right, so the bottom line is you could easily do a drive test, and you should. Why? Because you could order this up every six months. The industry could pay for it. And then you would know specifically, is there or is there not a significant gap in telecommunications coverage? We gave you evidence tonight proving there is no significant gap in telecommunications coverage. That's the only real data you have in your record tonight. That's it. There's nothing from Verizon. You can only make your decision based on what's in the public record. You have a decision. That decision is MetroPCS versus San Francisco. It tells you they have to prove a significant gap in telecommunications coverage. That's what it does. So it doesn't matter what the FCC order says, okay? Here's the other important case. This is the one. It's Mozilla versus the FCC. You know this is the net neutrality case, all right? The FCC said, hey, we don't want to regulate the Internet anymore. And so we're not going to do anything about wireless broadband anymore. What we're going to do is we're only going to regulate telecommunications service. Oh, and by the way, they said we want to preempt the states to not get in the way of anything. And they lost. That whole portion of the order was vacated.
Paul, that's your time. Okay, that... Okay, we've been through all of the rebuttals. And we're going to go ahead and bring this back to the commission to render a decision. What is the commission's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
We deny CAA 20-127 for the reasons stated in the staff report.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gillespie.
So we've heard a lot of discussion tonight about federal law. And I would just remind everybody that we're here to apply the ordinances of little old Boise as well as the comprehensive plan. And the city, and the city attorney believes that all the conditions for approving this facility have been met. We've had people fuss about the, you know, the quality of the reports that were submitted to the city. The city has concluded that they meet the city's requirements. And so I think that's where we're at. If indeed, the folks who believe these are a major health risk, I would suggest that they need to go to the council and add some language then to the code that allows us to have a process to consider that. But in the absence of that process or reference in the code, I don't think it's, you know, I don't feel like we can or should, you know, consider that. We just don't have a process for doing this. This is a planning and zoning Boise City ordinance decision. The city walked us through why it complies with those requirements. And that's where I'm at.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Gillespie. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bratner.
Just to echo some of the things Commissioner Gillespie noted, the issue of whether we have jurisdiction here, I think, is really where this hangs. Regardless of what you feel about the health effects of 5G, and I know this is still a wild debate, and even people from the IEEE was cited here, even people from the IEEE aren't agreeing on this. And there are studies that basically say, no, it's fine, but we need to discover more as we go along. Regardless of how you feel about that, our guidelines as a planning and zoning commission are clear and probably indeed is a city, but I'll leave that to the council. There are several things that we have jurisdiction over. They were provided, albeit maybe not in a timely manner. The other issues are subject to federal law. And fortunately, the people who testified tonight have a recourse along that line. So I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you, Jim. Any other discussion? Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second to deny CAA 20-127. Will the clerk please call the vote?[1760.57]